Present.
Semar Omar Yasser. Semar Romeo. Sheikh Said. Silongan Aida.
Present.
Sulaiman Ali. Tago Paisalin. Tan Nadil.
Present.
Ujazahi. Ulama Melania. Usman Asfar. Jakob Muhammad.
Present.
Uek Narciso.
Mr. Speaker, on the basis of the roll call, out of the seventy-nine members of the BTA Parliament, thirty-six physically responded to the call.
How many?
Twenty-three, thirty-six physically responded to the call and twenty-three MPs responded via Zoom. Mr. Speaker, we have a total of fifty-nine attendees, both physical and virtual. We therefore certify the presence of quorum, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Second, there is a certification that we have. We have a quorum and therefore we can officially transact business. Majority Leader.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. But before that, Mr. Speaker, we'd like to recognize the presence of visitors from ASA Philippines Foundation, headed by Al Hadzmir Arab, the Deputy Director. May we request them to stand up so that we can recognize them? Deputy Director Al Hadzmir Arab, Regional Administrator Zadia Hajal and Area Administrator Johanna P. Diranggaran. Mr. Speaker, they were from ASA Philippines Foundation. It is indeed our pleasure to be visited by honorable such as them, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to the Parliament.
Mr. Speaker, we are on item number six, reading and approval of the previous sessions. Journal thirty-seven, Mr. Speaker, and this is part of our... And therefore I move for the... I move for dispense with the reading of the journal of the previous session and a further move for the approval of this, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a move to dispense with the reading of the journal. Is there any second? The reading of the journal is hereby dispensed. There is also a motion to approve the journal of the previous meeting. Is there any second? It has been moved and seconded that we approve the journal of the previous meeting. So approved.
We proceed to the next item. We are on agenda number seven, Resolutions. May we request the Secretary General to read the first proposed resolution, the number, the title, and the authors, Mr. Speaker? May we request the Secretary General to read the first proposed resolutions, Mr. Speaker?
Secretary General may now please read the first resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the first proposed resolution is Proposed Resolution Number 141, entitled, "Resolution Urging the Ministry of Interior and Local Government (MILG) to Order All Local Government Units to Secure a Copy of the Resolution Number Six, Otherwise Known as the Parliamentary Rules, Procedures, and Practices of the Bangsa-Muro Transition Authority", authored by the Honorable MP Rasul Mithmog Jr., MP Baintan Adilampatuan, MP City Sahara Mastura, MP Ana Tarhata Basman, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I move to refer this to the Committee on Interior and Committee on Local Government, Mr. Speaker?
There is now a motion to refer this to the Resolution Number 141 to the Committee on Local Government. Is there any... It has been seconded. Any objection? Chair hearing none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General, please read the next proposed resolution.
On Proposed Resolution Number 356, Mr. Speaker, is entitled, "Resolution Commending Al Bashir Buto, the First and Youngest Bangsa-Muro Chess Player for His Outstanding Best in National and International Chess Championships and Providing Support for His Future Development", authored by the Honorable MP Rasul Mithmog Jr., MP Attorney Liza Alamiya, MP Attorney Suarto Ambuluto, MP Baintan Adilampatuan, MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, MP Rasul Ismail, MP Don Mustafa Luong. Co-authors, MP Muhammad Zainudin Bato, MP Yusuf Sakar, MP Marjani Makasalong, MP Ali Sulaiman, MP Musad Yamla, MP Abdullah Makapaar, MP Paisalin Tago, MP Ana Tarhata Basman, MP Jakilan Basit Abbas, MP Diamla Ramos, MP Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, and MP Muhammad Sheikh, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to treat this as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to move Proposed Resolution Number 356 and move this to the business for the day. And duly seconded, is there any objection? None, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Proposed... Next proposed resolution, can the Secretary General proceed?
On Proposed Resolution Number 387, Mr. Speaker, is entitled, "Resolution Directing the Marawi Rehabilitation Program Steering Committee and Relevant Ministries to Provide and Present an Official Report to the Bangsa-Muro Parliament Regarding the Implemented Programs for Marawi City and Its Constituents", authored by the Honorable MP Attorney Maizara Kuja Dendamundatip. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Zulkarnain Abbas, MP Abdullah Ahang, MP Edi Mapagali, MP Muslim Asmawin, MP Safrullah Dipatuan, MP Abdullah B. Hashim, MP Hatimilasan, MP Bainon Karun, MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr., MP Ustaz Abdul Mohmin Mujahid, MP Jamila Disimban Ramos, MP Mudayaw M. Sakar, and MP Melania Ulama, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer this to the special committee on Marawi, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to refer the Proposed Resolution 387 to the Special Committee on Marawi. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Same is here by approval.
Mr. Speaker, may we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution? May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker? May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker? May we request the Secretary General?
Secretary General, please.
Mr. Speaker, on Proposed Resolution Number 390 is entitled, "A Resolution Calling the Government of the Day of the Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanau to Allocate Funds for Post-COVID-19 Vaccination Recipients Who Experience Serious Adverse Effects", authored by Honorable MP Dr. Susana Es. Anayatin. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Omar Yasser Semar, MP Attorney Maizara Dendamon Latip, MP Attorney Liza Alamiya, MP Attorney Nabill Eitan, MP Dr. Zulkarnain Abbas, MP Engineer Aida Silungan, MP Zayur Rahman Alontu Ajung, MP Muslim Asmawin, MP Narciso C.U.Eki, MP CPA and Musudini Lidasan, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer this to the Committee on Health.
Committee on Health. There is now a motion to propose... A motion to refer this to the Committee on Health. What is the pleasure of the... Before we act on that motion, what is the pleasure of the Deputy Speaker Zia Ajung?
Mr. Speaker, the intention of this representation is also to assure that there will be a budget allocation for the COVID vaccination recipients and therefore that is the contemplation of this resolution. And so may I also refer this to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, Mr. Speaker?
Majority Leader?
Yes, I agree with the deputy speakers.
There is now a move to refer this committee to the... This resolution to the Committee on Health and also to the Committee on Finance for the allocation of funds. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval. Next.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Next.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. On Proposed Resolution Number 391 is entitled, "Resolution Respectfully Requesting the Regional Darul Ifta of the Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanau to Conduct Ulama Consultation Conference Posely to Discuss Matters Concerning the 2021 Ramadan Moon Sighting and Come Up with the Unified Declaration for the Starting Day of Fasting SAW", authored by the Honorable MP Abdul Mohmin Mujahid. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr., MP Alsad Satar, MP Muslimin Jakilan, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer this to the Committee on Rules, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to refer the Proposed Committee 391 to the Committee on Rules. Is there any second? There is a... Is there an observation or comment? You are recognized, Abdul Mujahid.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. If it is possible, Mr. Speaker, to make this a simple resolution, Mr. Speaker, since that this resolution should be... It's concerned the coming of Ramadan, Mr. Speaker, that really need the consensus and unity among the ulama, not only the Bangsa-Muro region but as well as nationwide as being experienced by the former...
What is the pleasure of the gentleman, Ustaz Abdul Mohmin Al Mujahid?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I object that...
Are you moving that this be treated as a simple resolution and move to the business for the day? Majority Leader?
That is the pleasure of MP Mujahid. I agree with the speaker because the period of Ramadan is past coming, Mr. Speaker, so I agree. So I therefore withdraw my motion and I move to treat this as a simple resolution.
There is now a motion to convert this into a simple resolution and move to the business for the day. Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General.
Sir Speaker, on Proposed Resolution Number 395 is entitled, "Resolution Expressing Full Support to the National and MOX BARM Deployment and Vaccination Plans for the COVID-19 Vaccines and Urging All Government Units, Agencies, and Instrumentalities in the Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region to Provide Full Cooperation Including Advocacy, Education, and Information Campaign for Its Successful Implementation", authored by Honorable MP Zulkarnain Abbas, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. May I propose... May I move that this proposed resolution be treated as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day, Mr. Speaker?
There is a motion to treat this as a simple... To treat Resolution Number 395 as a simple resolution. Do I hear any second? Duly seconded, do I hear any objection? Same here, same here, Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General, please read the next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, on Proposed Resolution Number 397 is entitled, "Resolution Expressing Deepest Sympathy and Condolences to the Family of the Late Governor Princess Tarhata Alontu Lukman and Recognizing Her Contributions for the Good of the Bangsa-Muro People", authored by Honorable MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Liza Alamiya, MP Attorney Suarto Ambuluto, MP Engineer Baintan Adilampatuan, MP Rasul Ismail, MP Engineer Don Mustafa Luong, and MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, Mr. Speaker.
What is this number of the resolution?
397, Mr. Speaker.
Resolution number... What is the proposed resolution number? I see many similar resolutions. 409?
397 or 391?
397.
397, 397.
397. Expressing deepest sympathy. What is the pleasure of the majority?
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat this as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day.
There is now a motion to treat Resolution Number 397 as a simple resolution and move this to the business for the day. I hear... I heard already the second. Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Proposed resolution... Next proposed resolution 399, will the Secretary General do the honor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on Proposed Resolution Number 399 is entitled, "Resolution Commending the ASA Philippine Foundation Incorporated for Islamic Financing Sharia Compliance Programs in the Philippines", authored by the Honorable MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Liza Alamiya, MP Attorney Suarto Ambuluto, MP Engineer Baintan Adilampatuan, MP Rasul Ismail, MP Engineer Don Mustafa Luong, and MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat this as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day.
There is a motion to treat this as a simple resolution. Is there any second? And duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on the next proposed resolution is Proposed Resolution Number 400, entitled, "Resolution Encouraging the BTA Leadership to Invite or Employ a Filipino Sign Language Interpreter During Plenary Sessions, Public Consultations, and Committee Hearings", authored by the Honorable MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Liza Alamiya, MP Attorney Suarto Ambuluto, MP Engineer Baintan Adilampatuan, MP Rasul Ismail, MP Engineer Don Mustafa Luong, and MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer this to the Committee on Rules for further discussion, Mr. Speaker.
Committee on Rules?
Committee on Rules.
There is a motion to move this... I refer this Proposed Resolution Number 400 to the Committee on Rules. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General, please.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on Proposed Resolution Number 404 is entitled, "Resolution Expressing Deepest Sympathy and Heartfelt Condolences of the Bangsa-Muro Parliament of Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanau on the Demise of the First Female Governor of Lanau del Sur, Princess Tarhata Alontu Lukman", authored by the Honorable MP Dr. Susana Anayatin. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Omar Yasser Semar, MP Attorney Nabill Eitan, MP Dr. Zulkarnain Abbas, MP Engineer Aida Silungan, MP Zayur Rahman Alontu Ajung, MP Narciso C.U.Eki, MP CPA Attorney Paisalin Pitago, MP Attorney Suarto Ambuluto, MP Attorney Nabill Eitan, MP Bay Maleha Kandaw, MP Abdullah Hashim, MP Edi Ali, MP Rasul Ismail, MP Abdul Mohmin Mujahid, MP Basit Abbas, MP Zainudin Muhammad Bato, MP Marjani Es. Makasalong, and MP City Sahara Mastura, Mr. Speaker.
Just a comment before the Majority Leader. I think I am so honored by this. My name appears twice as co-author. Please just make the correction while I'm privileged to be co-author. My name appeared twice. Minsan lang po, tama na. Majority Leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to treat this as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a move to treat this as a simple resolution and move to the business for the day. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Next resolution, Secretary General.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Proposed Resolution Number 405 is entitled, "Resolution Establishing the BARM North Sulawesi Sabah Halar Trade Corridor, Providing for the Purpose Framework for Cooperation, Mechanism for Consultation and Implementation, and Adopting Trade and Investment Facilitation Policies Between the Three Corridors", authored by Honorable MP Ali Bisanki. Co-author, Honorable MP Abdullah Ahang and MP Alzaid Salih and MP Mujib Abu, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move this resolution to refer to the Committee on Trade, Investment, and Tourism, Mr. Speaker.
There is proposed motion to refer this to the Committee on Trade, Investment, and Tourism. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Proposed Resolution Number 406 is entitled, "A Resolution Urging the Ministry of Health in Coordination with the BARM Component Local Government Units and the Private Sector to Intensify Efforts in Promoting Vaccine Confidence in the Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region", authored by Honorable MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer this to the Committee on Health.
Committee on Health? There is a motion to refer this to the Committee on Health? Is there any second? And duly seconded, is there any objection? Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General, please read the next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, Proposed Resolution Number 407 is entitled, "A Resolution Expressing Support for the Inaction into Law of the Senate Bill Number 2081 and House Bill Number 8249, Declaring the First Day of February of Every Year as National Hijab Day and Promoting an Understanding of the Muslim Tradition of Wearing Hijab", Wearing a Hijab, authored by the Honorable MP Amil Bahar Mawalil and MP Engineer Baintan Adilampatuan, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat this as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day.
There is a motion to treat this as a simple... Treat Proposed Resolution Number 407 as a simple resolution and move this to the business for the day. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by...
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General, please read the next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, on Proposed Resolution Number 408 is entitled, "A Resolution Celebrating International Women's Day on March 8, 2021 and Commending the Social, Economic, Cultural, and Political Achievements of Women in the Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region", authored by the Honorable MP Amil Bahar Mawalil. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr., Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat this as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day.
Simple resolution?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to treat this as a simple resolution. Is there any second? And duly seconded, is there any objection? And also move this to the business of the day. Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Secretary General, please read the next proposed resolution.
Mr. Speaker, on the next proposed resolution is Proposed Resolution Number 409, entitled, "Resolution Expressing the Deepest Condolences and Profound Sympathy of the Bangsa-Muro Parliament of the Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanau to the Verid Family of Former Lanau del Sur Provincial Governor Princess Tarhata Alangadi Alontu Lukman on Her Untimely Demise", authored by the Honorable MP Zayur Rahman Alontu Ajung, MP Attorney Pangalian Balindung, MP Bainon Karun, MP Abdurrahim Makakuwa, MP Attorney Liza Alamiya, MP Attorney Raisa Jajuri, and MP Attorney Ana Tarhata Basman. Co-authors, the Honorable Attorney Nabill Eitan, Honorable MP Attorney Omar Yasser Semar, MP Attorney Jose Lorena, MP Attorney Maizara Latip, MP Musudini Lidasan, MP Susana Anayatin, MP Engineer Aida Silungan, MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr., MP Attorney Suarto Ambuluto, MP Engineer Don Mustafa Luong, MP Engineer Baintan Adilampatuan, MP Rasul Ismail, MP Professor Edi Ali, MP Abraham Burahan, MP Architect Edward Iugera, MP Attorney Paisalin Tago, MP Attorney Ubaidah Pakasam, and MP Attorney Lanang Ti Ali Jr., MP Datukada Fiji Manguda Datu, MP Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Mr. Speaker.
May we... I move to treat this as a simple resolution and be transferred to the business for the day, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to treat this as a simple resolution and move for the business for the day. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed resolution?
Mr. Speaker, on Proposed Resolution Number 410 is entitled, "Resolution Directing the Bangsa-Muro Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage to Identify, Collect, Document, and Promote the Life Stories of the Public Figures who made Significant Contributions in the History of the Bangsa-Muro", authored by the Honorable MP Zayur Rahman Alontu Ajung, MP Attorney Ana Tarhata Basman, MP Attorney Suarto Ambuluto. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Attorney Nabill Eitan, MP Attorney Omar Yasser Semar, MP Attorney Maizara Latip, MP Musudini Lidasan, MP Susana Anayatin, MP Engineer Aida Silungan, MP Attorney Rasul Mithmog Jr., MP Engineer Baintan Adilampatuan, MP Rasul Ismail, MP Attorney Paisalin Tago, and MP Kadukafi Ji Manguda Datu, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Before I move this to the... Before I refer this to the Deputy Speaker, there is a request from MP Ali Bisanki to include as co-author in that particular resolution, Mr. Speaker. So therefore, Mr. Speaker, I move to refer this to the Committee on Rules, Mr. Speaker.
Committee on Rules?
Yes.
There is now a motion to refer this 410 to the Committee on Rules. Is there any second? Duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is here by approval.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we proceed to the next item and order business. We are on first stage, Mr. Speaker. I would like also to remind this august body that in the first stage bill, any members of the BTA Parliament would signify their interest to be co-authors of the particular bill. This is the time that you can make recognition to be co-author of the particular bill. May we request the Secretary General to read the next... The proposed stage bill number one, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on the first stage of bills, we have BTA Parliament Bill Number 42. It's entitled, "An Act Establishing a Bangsa-Muro Intertribal Commission Composition, Powers, and Functions and Providing Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes", authored by Honorable MP Sultan Idrisah Haji Naser Rinbang, Mr. Speaker.
This is a private member bill, Mr. Speaker, and the first stage bill is just reading the title, the author, and the number.
Can you speak louder, Majority Leader?
Yes, may we proceed, Mr. Speaker, to the next BTA Parliament Bill. May we request the Secretary General to read the next BTA Parliament Bill, Mr. Speaker? May we request the Secretary General, Mr. Speaker, to read the next first stage bill of the BTA Parliament?
Secretary General is hereby directed. To read?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Read the title.
Mr. Speaker, on the BTA Parliament Bill Number Seven Seven is entitled An Act Establishing and Appropriating a Buffer Replenishable Fund to Defray the Timely Payment of Salaries and Other Remuniations of the DOH Nationally Funded Health Workers Deployed in the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region Under the Supervision of the Barm Ministry of Health. Authored by Honorable MP Jul Karnain M Abbas, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is a private member bill. May we request the Secretary General to read the next bill, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker. We would like to clarify.
You are recognized MP Engineer Baintan Ampatuan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. We want to clarify the earlier statement of the Majority Leader that at this stage we can manifest if we want to be co-authors of the bills.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
Am I right?
Yes, under the rules, this is.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, because in the succeeding proposed bill, we will be signifying our intention. Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker.
So it's clarified.
Yes. So may we request the Secretary General to note the.
Next.
Manifestation of MP Baintan Ampatuan to be co-author, to be authors, to be co-author of the bill number seventy seven.
The Presiding Chair also wish to be part of that.
Yes. May we request the Secretary General to read the text number three Parliament Bill on the first stage.
Speaker.
Yes.
What is the pleasure of the MP from Sulu and Deputy Minister for Housing?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to be similar to the clarification made by MP Baintan. I would like to, my intent is still to be a co-author to this Parliament Bill Number Seventy Nine, but I, I would have reserved this when it is repaired already. Because my understanding of reparations is there will be no discussion at the time of reparations. So I would like to be clarified if the rules really spell that the manifestation for co-authorship will be in the first stage of the bill. If that is the case, I intend to modify that because my understanding of repairal is there will be no discussion, neither would there be a manifestation of co-authorship in the proceeding. But if it is provided in the rules, I would agree, but I would propose an amendment to that because similarly, the, the rule, because repairal should only be combined to repairal. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
At the front time, your honor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I respectfully, may proceed with the next BTA Parliament Bill.
May I recognize first the Deputy Speaker, Zia Ajung. What is the pleasure of the gentleman?
Now, Mr. Speaker, I thought we already moved on with the BTA Parliament Bill Number Seventy Nine. I would just like to make manifestation. But since we are talking about the other bills, Mr. Speaker, I give way to the lady from the other side of the aisle, Mr. Speaker.
The intelligent lady from the other side.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the compliment. Mr. Speaker, I'm quite confused now. What bill are we talking? Because if we are talking about bill number seventy nine, I would like to manifest my co-authorship to this proposed bill.
So there is a manifestation, please note that, Secretariat.
Um, Mr. Speaker, I think we still have to read the number three first stage bill, Mr. Speaker.
Seventy nine.
Seven second.
The gentleman from Lano Sur is the deputy speaker is recognized. He earlier wanted to be recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to associate myself with the BTA Parliament Number Seventy Nine by requesting the proponent to be a co-author of this measure. My, my intention, Mr. Speaker, is not to signify the support, my support on this bill, but to work closely if granted by the, by the proponent, to work closely with him since Wau District Hospital is part of the constituency which I stand and represent to this chamber, Mr. Speaker.
There is a manifestation to, to be part of this, of this BTA Parliament Number Seventy Nine from the gentleman from Lano. Will the author accept, accept the offer of the Deputy Speaker, Zia? One minute, one minute suspension.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. May we request the Secretary General to read the number three first stage of bills before we recognize any co-authorship of the particular bills.
Secretary General, will you please read the number three item, BTA Parliament Bill Number Seventy Nine, titled?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on the item number three of the first stage of bill is proposed BTA Parliament Bill Number Seventy Nine, Entitled An Act Upgrading the Existing of Wau District Hospital in Lano del Sur from its present Level One with Twenty Five Bed Capacity into a Level Two with One Hundred Bed Capacity and Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes. Authored by Honorable MP Safrola Dipatuan, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is a private member bill and there are members of the parliament who signify their interest to be co-authors. Yes. May we recognize MP Omar Semah.
The Deputy Speaker Omar Semah is recognized.
Attorney Tago, Datu Toy, Manguda Datu, Deputy Speaker Zia and Attorney Lorena, Datu Ali Sangki, Datu Eddie Ali, Ma'am Susan Anayatin, Ms. MP Baynon Karun, MP Minister Romi Semah, Romi Saliga, Sultan Rimbang, Jamal, Jamil Makaraya, Ustaz Zaid Salindab,
Musa Jamla.
Musa Jamla, Ustaz Mujahid, Datu Antau Mi Timbang, Ustaz Pak, Sahi Uja, Satar, Sakar, Doctor. Jul Karnain Abbas, MP Jan Jakilan have all signified. Datu Antau Mi Timbang, MP Jordan Smile, Smile, By Siti Sahara, Mastura, Jack Abbas, The Deputy Chief Minister Ali Sulaiman, The Deputy Speaker Hatimil Hassan and the Honorable Mujib Abu and.
MP Yakub, MP Mujib Abu, MP Ali Osali, MP Burhan.
Wala kang saon, Majority Leader.
We are all, we, all of those names and including the Presiding Speaker, I am all signified to become co-authors to this very important legislative bill.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker.
Engineer Baintan, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. On the part of the minority, on behalf of the minority, Mr. Speaker, we would like to join the author, Doc Safrola Dipatuan, to be principal author if accepted by the principal author, Mr. Speaker. All of the minority, Mr. Speaker.
The Deputy Minority Leader is speaking for and in behalf of the entire minority group in the BTA Parliament. Will the principal author accept the offer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I have to reconvene the presence of our colleagues who are joining us through Zoom and also they would like to manifest inclusion as co-authors of this bill. So in order to shorten the time that we will be consuming, I would like to make a manifestation that if possible, will, everybody will be included as co-author of this bill, except of course if there is someone who would decline inclusion.
Except those who will expressly express their objection to be included, all will be included as co-author. That's the offer and I think that's accepted. Any objection? Chair here's none. Same is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
May we request the Secretary General to read the next proposed BTA Bill, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General, please read the next proposed.
Mr. Speaker, on the next proposed BTA Parliament Bill
Number Eight.
Is number eight zero, Entitled An Act Recognizing and Declaring the Bangsamuro Holidays to be Observed in the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region and for Other Purposes. Authored by the Honorables MP Attorney Rasul Mitmog Junior and MP Amil Bahar Mualil. Co-authors, the Honorable MP Liza Adamiya, Honorable Attorney Suwarto Ambulutu, Honorable Engineer Baintan Adil Ampatuan, Honorable Rasul Ismail, Honorable Engineer Don Mustafa Luong and Honorable Eddie Ali, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is a private member bill.
Can I hear you, Majority Leader?
This is a private member, member bill and anyone who signify their interest to be co-authors of this. May we respectfully recognize MP Zia Alort, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker. May I recognize the Deputy Speaker? Zia Ajung.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, I would like to associate myself with this resolution. I would like to request the principal authors, if so willing, and be part of this resolution as co-author, Mr. Speaker.
Is the principal author willing to accept the offer of the Deputy Speaker to be part of this bill number eight zero to be co-author?
We, we accept, Sir Speaker.
Then yours truly would like to be part of this. Please include my name if the honorable author will accept to be as co-author. Will the principal author accept my offer to co-author this?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we accept all those interested.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from the Second and First District of Sulu?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
My best friend forever.
I also would like to manifest my intent to join as a co-author of this resolution, BTA Parliament Bill Number Eighteen, Similar to the manifestation of the Deputy Speaker now Presiding.
There is an offer of the Deputy Minister and MP Attorney Jose Lorena to associate himself with this measure, Parliamentary Bill Number Eight Zero. Will the principal author accept?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we accept it, Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the gentle Deputy Speaker?
Speaker, I also manifest my intent to be a co-author to the proposed measure, Mr. Speaker.
Will the principal author accept? Will the principal author accept the manifestation of the Deputy Speaker Omar Semah of Potabato City in Magindanaw?
Definitely, Mr. Speaker, we accept the co-authorship.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
MP.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Majority Leader.
The MP Saf Dipatuan is recognized.
Yes, I also would like to manifest my intention to be included as a co-author of BTA Parliament Bill Number Eighteen if the principal authors would allow.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we definitely accept. And, Mr. Speaker, we have a list here of those who are also interested that we accept as co-authors.
Please read.
MP Zia Ajung, MP Tan, MP Semah, MP Lorena, MP Saliga, MP Omar Semah, MP Anayatin, MP Dipatuan, MP Jamla, MP Mujahid, Sultan Rimbang, Ma'am Baynon Karun and.
Deputy Chief Minister.
MP Ahang.
Deputy Chief Minister.
Deputy Chief Minister. MP Ueki.
Secretary, please note the hand speaking race.
MP Uja, MP Sulaiman and MP Abbas.
So those will be included.
MP Borhat, Mr. Speaker.
And those will be included as co-authors of this proposed measure. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we proceed to the next bill. We will request the Secretary General to read the next proposed bill.
Secretary General, please read the next proposed BTA Bill Eighty One.
Mr. Speaker, on item number five is proposed BTA Bill, Parliament Bill Number Eight One, Entitled An Act Prioritizing Establishment of the Bangsamuro Agriculture and Fisheries Training Institute, Authored by Honorable MP Muhammad Yakub, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is a private member bill. Any member of the parliament would signify their interest to be co-authors, please raise your hand. Yes. May we request to have.
Can the Majority Leader please list the names?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
All those who are wanted to be co-author, please raise your hand or approach the Majority Leader. And meantime, we call for a suspension of one minute.
The following members of the Parliament are co-authors of this particular.
Can we have orders, please?
MP Zia Alonto, MP Ali Sangki, MP Prop Eddie Ali, MP Narciso Koyuiki, MP Dipatuan, MP Saliga, MP Nabiltan, MP Baytan Ampatuan, MP Romeo Sema. Yes. 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 MP. Yes, MP Romeo Sema, MP Say Chalendab, MP Ibrahim Ali, MP Soeguranon, MP Romeo Sema, MP Omar Sema, MP Muhammad Pak, MP Rasmitmog, MP Ahmad Abbas, MP Sultan Rimbang, MP Mujahid, MP Uja, MP Jakilan, MP Mangoredato, MP Lorena, and MP Zulkarnen Abbas.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader, I have not heard my name.
Yes, MP Nabiltan. You are number seven, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
Ah. May I recognize MP Maisara Damdamon Latif with the indulgence of the Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, we also manifested our co-authorship in our Zoom. I hope that the Secretariat is taking note so that it will be included as co-authors of the bill, BTA Bill Eighty One, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretariat is hereby directed to check on the chat group because those in the Zoom have manifested also their desire to be co-author of this measure. Please take note. Your manifestation is noted. MP Maisara Damdamon Latif, we miss you here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Including MP Anayatin, MP and MP Baynon Karon. And MP Sulaiman. MP Ali Sangki.
Majority Floor Leader, please take note of the earlier manifestation of MP Maisara Damdamon Latif, and the Secretariat, please take note and check the chat box.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker. And MP Tago. Yes, Mr. Speaker, we proceed to.
Those are the, those are, are, those are the ones who manifested their desire to be co-authors together with those in the Zoom.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Anything more?
No, Mr. Speaker, we proceed, Mr. Speaker, to, we will request the Secretary General to read the next proposed bill, Mr. Speaker.
May I request the Secretary General?
Mr. Speaker.
And what is the pleasure of the gentleman from Lanau del Sur, James Makaraya?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, since the author of the uh parliamentary bill number ninety-two, the previous one, is in the Zoom, I think there is a need for the authors to accept all this who signify their intent to be a co-author, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we respectfully request MP Yakub, who is now in Zoom, to accept the intent of the members of the Parliament to be co-authors of this particular bill. He is in Zoom. MP Yakub, the principal author of this bill, Mr. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize him?
May we recognize MP Yakub, the Minister of Agriculture and Fisheries, who is in the Zoom? Please proceed.
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, and Majority Floor Leader. Possible, allow me to express my thanks and gratitude to all members of the Parliament uh infected to support and partner of this bill number eighty-one. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I'm happy and pleased to accept for to ask as part of the.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Minister Yakub. He is accepting.
Mr. Speaker, we proceed to the next proposed bill, Mr. Speaker.
Next proposed bill, Secretary General, please read.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on the next proposed bill is BTA Parliament Bill Number Eight Two, entitled "An Act Providing Legal Framework for the Harmonization and Implementations of Pertinent Laws and Policies Relevant to the Conservation and Management of the Resources of Ligawasan Marsh, Creating for the Purpose the Ligawasan Marsh Management Commission, Allocating Funds Therefore and Other Purposes", authored by the Honorable MP Ali Bisanki, co-author the Honorable MP Mujib Abu and MP Abdullah Ahang, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is a private member bill. Any member of the Parliament who signify their interest to be co-authors, we please do now.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the?
On the part of the minority and in behalf of my colleagues who are around today, MP Amir Mawalil and MP Rasul Mitmog, we would like to be part of this BTA Parliament Bill Number Eighty Two as co-authors.
Is the principal author willing to accept?
May we respectfully request MP Ali Sangki.
MP Ali Sangki, the Honorable MP Ali Sangki is hereby recognized.
Uh, thank you very much. Yes na yes ang sagot ko doon. The more co-author, the most vibrant.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, to shorten the process, Mr. Speaker, we will request the Secretariat to take the list of the members of the Parliament who would like to be co-authors.
The Secretariat is hereby directed to take the names of those interested to be co-author of this measure.
We will request the Secretary to take the names of the MPs to raise their arms.
Can we proceed? Are we done with the listing?
Already recorded the names of the MPs, so we can proceed to the next bill, Mr. Speaker. May we request.
We let the Secretariat continue the listing, and we already proceed with the next measure.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. We respectfully request the Secretary General to read the next proposed bill.
With the indulgence of the principal author, who may or may not accept the co-authorship. Next proposed bill?
Eighty-three.
Please read.
Yes, please read.
Secretary General.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on the next proposed bill is a BTA Parliament Bill Number Eight Three, entitled "An Act Implementing the People's Right to Information in the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanao", providing guidelines therefore and providing penalties for the violation thereof, authored by Honorable MP, the Honorable MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, MP Engineer Baytan Ampatuan, co-authored by the Honorable MP Attorney Liza Masood Alamiya, MP Attorney Suwarto Angulo Two, MP Engineer Dun Mustapaluong, MP Rasul Ismail, and MP Attorney Rasul Mitmog Jr., Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is a private member bill. Any member of the Parliament who signify their interest as co-authors, we do now. If there is none, we proceed to the next.
Anybody who wish to be co-author, please just approach the Majority Leader or have your name listed with the Secretary General so we can proceed with the next measure.
We request the members of the Parliament just to raise their arms so that they will be listed.
Uh, session suspended for one minute.
May we proceed to the next proposed bill, Mr. Speaker?
Secretary General.
Mr. Speaker, with due respect to the.
What is the pleasure of the Deputy Minority Floor Leader, Engineer Bay Intan Ampatuan?
Um, with due respect to the Majority Floor Leader, we don't know who are the ones to be co-authors of this. Um, and we would like to ask the principal author if he is accepting all the requests, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, may we ask the principal author of the measure to to inform us, and of course, Engineer Bay Intan is also a principal author, if they are willing to accept others who may wish to be co-authors, which we have asked the Secretariat to list now. What is the pleasure of the principal author?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I am more than willing to accept.
You accept?
The manifestation of manifestations of my colleagues in the BTA to be part of this landmark legislation.
Thank you, my brother Amir Mawalil. May we ask the one half of the the principal author, Engineer Bay Intan, do you accept?
Um, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, but we just want to know who are they, Mr. Speaker, because, Mr. Speaker, if we say, um, actually, this bill is the translation of the Moral Governance, Mr. Speaker, so um, we would like to seek support really from the members of the Parliament.
It also complements the national measure on freedom of information.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, precisely.
May we ask, then duly noted, may we ask the Majority Leader to please read all the names who may wish to be part of as co-author of this measure?
Mr. Speaker, there are.
If we are that listing.
Professor Eddie Ali. Yes. Professor, MP Romeo Sema, MP Jamla Musa, MP Anayatin, MP Ahmad Abbas, MP Doc Sap Dipatuan, MP Yakub, MP Mastura Sitisara, MP Baynon Karon, MP Lorena, and MP MP Yakub, MP Sangki.
MP Nabiltan, Your Honor.
And MP Nabiltan.
Nabiltan, Your Honor. May wish to be part of as co-author. Dapos na?
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
Meron pa nagre-raise ng hands, Majority Leader, Secretary, nandun sa side na.
MP Jamil Makaraya, MP Romeo Saliga, MP Sakar Udayaw, MP Say Chalendab, MP Sultan Rimbang, MP Uja, MP Mujahid, and MP Narciso Koyuiki. And MP Mujib Abu. MP Narciso Koyuiki.
Please include my name, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, that's all, Mr. Speaker. And MP Jakilan.
Mr. Speaker.
MP.
Nabiltan.
Nabiltan and MP Maisara Latif.
Anybody from the Zoom, aside from MP Maisara?
Mr. Speaker, I wish to.
What is the pleasure of MP Maisara?
Mr. Speaker, I wish to move, I move that the Secretariat or the Secretary General always check the chat box because it seems that we will be disenfranchised of our opportunity to co-author if the Secretariat do not do its mandate to check the chat box for co-authorship.
Including, Mr. Speaker.
We note your concern.
Including also those in the chat room, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretariat is directed with your active assertion of that right to be recognized. The Secretariat is again reminded to check on the chat box and include those names.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, can we now proceed to the next proposed bill, Mr. Speaker?
Next proposed bill?
May we request the Secretary General?
Secretary General, please read. Eighty-four?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on the next proposed bill is a BTA Parliament Bill Number Eight Four, entitled "An Act Creating the Seaweed Industry Development Authority in the Bangsamuro Autonomous Region and Defining Its Objectives, Powers, and Functions", authored by Honorable MP Amil Bahar Mawalil, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize MP Eddie Ali, Mr. Speaker. Eddie Ali first.
What is the pleasure of my friend, Professor Eddie Mapag Ali?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Tawi Tawi is a major producing province of seaweeds and a significant number of of the people are engaged in seaweed farming. Mr. Speaker, if the primary, if the main author accepts my manifestation and his being from Tawi Tawi, I would like to manifest my inclusion as a co-author of this Parliamentary Bill Number Eighty Four. And include, and wish to include also MP Brother Zia, MP Brother Dipatuan, Brother MP Musa, Brother MP Ahang. MP. Lahat ng nag-race, baka hindi ko ma. Allah, lahat ang nag-rise, baka hindi ko ma. And MP Brother Tago.
Secretaryate is directed to list.
Lahat na oh. Those who raised their hands, maki lang po, Secretaryate. Marami salamat po.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, those who raised their hands, I think similar with the previous bills. Uh, sila rin po, yung mga nakakao-authors, no? Uh, namely, uh, MP Zia, MP Sankey, MP Ali, MP Narciso Koyuiki, MP Dipatuan, MP Stad Side Selendap, MP Romeo Sema, MP Bayntan Ampatuan, MP Jose Lorena, MP Jakilan, MP Rasmit Mog, MP Sakar, MP Sultan Rimbang, MP Uja, MP Mujahid, MP Mangodato, uh, MP Abdullah Ismail, Abdullah Ismail, MP Ahmad Abbas, MP Abdullah Ahang, MP uh, Sitisahara Mastura, MP Hati Mil Hassan, MP Anayatin, MP Baynun Karun, MP Muslim Abu Bakar, uh, MP Usad Sapanton, MP Burahan.
MP Nabiltan.
Mr. Speaker, same with the previous.
Please include my name.
And MP Nabiltan, Mr. Speaker.
Will the principal author.
And MP Aaron Abbas.
Will the principal author accept the
MP Mujahid.
Propose the desire of the of our colleagues to be co-author of the measure?
Mr. Speaker.
And MP.
The those in the Zoom.
And those in the Zoom, and those in the Zoom, may we request.
Please check the chat box.
And put it in the chat box.
Pangatlo na ni MP Maisara.
Mr. Speaker, uh, thank you for the overwhelming support. But before anything else, I hope that the number, the overwhelming support of my fellow colleague will translate in the swift passage of this measure as a testament that we are not forgetting our, uh, brothers and sisters in the island provinces of Basilan Solo and Tawi Tawi. I accept the manifestations of my fellow colleagues to be part of this again landmark legislation, Mr. Speaker.
Include those in the Zoom.
Yes, including those who manifested in the Zoom.
In the Zoom chat box. Have we listed the names of the those in the Zoom?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, when in fact, the secretary in charge of the box in the Zoom is actively taking notes of the manifestations of our honorable MPs who manifest in the Zoom. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, may we proceed now to the next bill, uh, number nine.
Can we proceed, Secretary General, to the proposed bill, parliamentary bill eighty-five?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, on the next proposed parliament bill is BTA Parliament Bill number eight-five. Entitled An Act Institutionalizing The Barter Trade In The Bangsamoro Autonomous Region Promoting Its Growth And Development And Constituting The Bangsamoro Barter Trade Board For The Purpose. Authored by the Honorable MP Emil Bahar Mualim. Co-authors, the Honorables MP Attorney Liza Masood Alamiya, MP Engineer Don Mustafa Luong, MP Engineer Baintan Ampatuan, MP Rasool Ismail, MP Attorney Soharto Anggulutu and MP Eddie Mapag Ali, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is a private member bill and any members of the parliament who wishes to be co-authors, Mr. Speaker, please do so. Okay, Mr. Speaker, the following are co-authors, Mr. Speaker. MP Sitisahara Mastura, MP Zia Lonto, MP Jamla Musa, MP uh, Stad Sapanton, MP Abdullah, Abdullah Ismail, MP uh, Ahang, MP Baynun Karun, MP Mangodato, MP Muslim Abu Bakar, MP Anayatin, MP Sulaiman, MP Yakub, MP Ahmad Abbas, MP Aaron Abbas, MP Romeo Sema, MP Sap Dipatuan, MP Sakar, MP Side Selendap, MP Sultan Rimbang, MP Jakilan, MP Narciso Koyuiki, MP Muhammad Pak, MP Jamil Makaraya, MP Uja, MP Mujahid and MP Abu, Mujib Abu. And MP Ali Osaki and MP uh, Ali Bi Sankey.
And myself.
And MP Nabiltan.
Yes.
And those in the Zoom.
And those in the Zoom, Mr. Speaker.
Those in the Zoom, have you manifested in the chat box?
May we respectfully recognize.
We are getting through that.
Yes, may we respectfully recognize.
MP Tokao Mastura of Magindano is recognized.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from Magindano?
May I be, may I include that as co-author of that bill?
Yes. Co-author of the bill, Mr. Speaker.
Co-author of the bill, noted.
May we, uh, ask the proponent, Mr. Speaker, if he is.
Will the proponent, principal author of the measure accept?
Mr. Speaker, thank you for the overwhelming support and I hope that this will translate again in the swift passage of this, uh, uh, landmark and meaningful legislation. I accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, brother Amir Mualim.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, before we proceed to the next, Mr. Speaker, may we have a fifteen-minute suspension of the session, Mr. Speaker, to have an Asa prayer.
Session suspended for fifteen minutes.